Please rise to the plate.
...... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Headland?
Here.
Trustee Clements?
Here.
Trustee McNell?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
And President Daly is absent.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's great to see such a large turnout today for a number of special recognitions. So we'll try to speed through the beginning. Apologies in advance for myself if I don't know all the dance steps for the entire meeting. I'm filling in for Jen, who is not here today. But a couple things, upcoming agendas. The next meeting of the Howl Dane Board of Education is on Tuesday, February 4th at 7:00 PM in this room in the Howl Dane High School. Reminder, as prior to that meeting, we will have our annual Board of Ed Facilities Walk Through. We'll be convening at 6 o'clock in the main building for a tour of facilities. And the second thing, availability of petitions for trustee elections. Julia, I'll turn it over to you for details and specifics.
Okay, there is one seat open at the end of this year. Trustee Clements' seat expires at the, on June 30th, and so petitions for interested candidates are available in the district office. Or if you want to contact me, you can email me, jufamularo@howldeanschool.org, and I can set you up with a petition. They are due on April 20th in the district office, no later than 5:00 PM.
And for those of you who are, no doubt, more tech savvy than me, you know that it is available on the Howl Dane website under the Budget section, which occurs at the same time.
Information is, but not the petition itself.
Information, yes.
Okay.
And your email address, which is important. Fantastic. Dr. Benanti?
Thank you, Mr. Headland. I'd like to welcome all the members of our community who are with us this evening, know most of whom are here in honor of one student and several staff members who we'd like to recognize this evening as part of our board process. To start, because I'll keep my comments brief and be commenting throughout, I'd like to introduce Lisa Hamel from Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES, who's right here at this mic, who's going to introduce Erin Ledwith, who's BOCES Student of Distinction.
Good evening, Dr. Benanti, board members, staff, families, and students. I'm Lisa Hamel. I'm the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES Director of Special Education, and I am here tonight with Assistant Superintendent Lou Riolo, Assistant Superintendent Lynn Allen, our board member Kathy Lyburne, and a number of our staff members also to hear all to honor Erin for her outstanding performance in our program this year, your student and ours. We thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to honor your student with the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES Student of Distinction Award. Please allow me to introduce the principal of our Pines Bridge program, Chilla Mate.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this great honor. It's been such a joy watching Erin grow over the last few years that she's been at Pines Bridge in the Transitions Program, and she's really come such a long way. She's made so many strides, and we're so proud of her. So I'd like to introduce her teacher, Connie Leora, to come and say a few more words to kind of go over some of the additional successes and progress that she's made.
Good evening, everyone. So, as we said, Erin's in the Transitions Program at our BOCES, and this is her third year in my class. And what's kind of a fun fact is that her mom used to be my assistant teacher. So I guess you liked the program, Noreen, because the next year after that, Erin came, and I had to lose Noreen. That being said, the program, our program was very different from what Erin was used to. She was used to going to one place, to Culinary, every day. And now, at a new program, she would be going to a different work site each day of the week. That meant a different task each day, a different boss each day, a different set of protocols for each work site each day, lots of process. It wasn't easy for her. In fact, I think it's fair to say, we were asking, what we were asking you to do, Erin, was challenging. Yeah, she's going down. But here's the thing, we knew she could rise to the occasion and reach the bar that had been set for her. We wouldn't have said it if we didn't think she could. We knew she could. We gave her many tools to do that, but it was up to her to use them. So we could have given her all the tools in the world. If she wasn't going to use them, it wasn't going to do any good. And she did use them. And she used them well. Since beginning two and a half years ago, Erin is now very proficient at her work sites, particularly Once Upon a Child, where she is working almost independent of any of our BOCES staff. I'm in the building with her in the store, but she's basically running the show from beginning to end. She knows. She navigates both of our buildings. If you've ever been on our campus, our buildings are very large, and you get lost very easily. But she's navigating both of them independently. She follows her schedule independently, and she's a good friend to all who know her. This year, we reduced her one-to-one to half-time, one-to-one, because we felt so strongly that she was ready. She'll be graduating this year, going out into the world, and we wanted to give her just that extra chance of, you know, doing more for herself. And the confidence and confidence that she's shown has told us that she is ready, and she's been doing great all year so far. Great. So she's ready to face the world and everything it has to offer for her. And we're very proud of you, Erin.
Erin, could you please come up?
All right, we'd like to take a photo, but we need more room.
I do, with all due respect, ask for everyone's patience, or I should express my appreciation for everyone's patience to begin with, because I have a feeling we're gonna, there's gonna be a few photo ops in the next few minutes. So unfortunately, the next staff member who we are recognizing is unable to be here this evening, but I did want to make a point to recognize Michelle Cordero. Ms. Cordero recently received or achieved her National Board Certification after five years of dedicated work through that process. It's a very difficult process. She's one of the few educators in our region to achieve National Board Certification. And the National Board Review Process is quite extensive. There's five core propositions that our teachers, or an eligible teacher, would have to submit documentation towards, reflections on their practice to be, to achieve National Board Status. And at this point, we believe Ms. Cordero is the first Howl Dane teacher to receive National Board Certification. So we're very proud of Michelle. And if I could just ask for the audience to join me in applause for her accomplishment. We'll put her certificate aside. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Simon Dudar. Simon was recently selected to the New York State Master Teacher Program in partnership with the State University of New York and Math for America. The New York State Master Teacher Program celebrates the work of the highest-performing STEM teachers by establishing an expert community dedicated to developing expertise in the areas of content, pedagogy, and relationships with students, families, and the surrounding community. And for over 10 years, Simon's been an integral part of STEM programming at Howl Dane, and we want to congratulate him on his recent acceptance in the Master Teacher Program. Simon? Okay, let's see. Kelsey Flaherty. Okay, Kelsey. So we had a great fall athletics season, and two of our teams advanced to the state finals. In addition to our cross-country team, we had several runners that went on the state tournament as well. And right now, I'd like to draw your attention to Kelsey Flaherty. And Kelsey, you can give us just a little wave from where you are. Kelsey was recently named the Poughkeepsie Journal Coach of the Year for the 2019 varsity volleyball season. And under her coaching, the Howl Dane Girls Volleyball Team had a 14-2 overall record this season. The team beat KEO for the Class D Sectional Championship prior to advancing to the state tournament, and went on to finish third overall in Class D for New York State. And as I mentioned a few board meetings ago, I had the opportunity to attend the regional championship game, which was just an outstanding, outstanding game, and truly reflected the very best of our community in so many ways. We're so proud of the team and so proud of Kelsey's leadership. And I want to thank Kelsey for another amazing volleyball season. And I was joking with Kelsey before, so the team's overall record was 14-2, and I said, we'll have to maybe add another win in the win column, because Kelsey was recently engaged, I believe, this past weekend. Is that correct? Congratulations. I know you're here with your fiancee tonight. Congratulations. Come on up, Kelsey.
I just really want to say thank you to the school board, obviously Dr. Benanti, Julia Sniffen, and Christopher Solomon for the continuous support that I've received this past season and the seasons in the past. And I just want to say how proud I am of my team. And like you said before, not only at the regional game, but just looking up into the stands at almost every single home and away game, you can always find someone from the Cold Spring and Howl Dane community looking, looking at you and, and watching you and supporting you. So it's just a great feeling for me as a coach, and even better feeling for the girls. So just thank you so much for recognizing this.
Congratulations, Kelsey. And lastly, I'd like to recognize Coach Steve Schweichhardt, who was also recognized as the Poughkeepsie Journal Coach of the Year, however, for Girls Varsity Soccer for the 2019 season. Coach Schweichhardt was assisted by Mary Callahan and Callie Schweichhardt. And I probably should have mentioned that Ms. Nancy Martinez assisted with the Girls Varsity Program. Steve led the girls to a record of eight wins, five losses, and three ties this season. And the team beat the LaFell School for the Class C Sectional Championship, and finished the season fourth overall in the Class C, in Class C for New York State. And I believe that, Coach, if I'm not mistaken, that's our second year in a row to the state finals up in Cortland. And Howl Dane, obviously, was very happy to have Steve lead the team this year, and congratulate him on his recent recognition for Poughkeepsie Journal Coach of the Year. Come on up, Steve.
I'll be brief. Thank you to the Board of Ed, Dr. Benanti, Julia, for all the support this year. And I wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fair to not mention Chris, particularly for a very fateful text I received from him last July, asking if I was available to coach, which turned out to be just a fantastic experience for me this year, with the help of my two tremendous assistant coaches, Mary Callahan, who worked at JFK all year and had to drive over here every day for games and practices relentlessly. So it was just fun to work with Mary, and of course, my daughter Callie as well, who somehow figured out a way to get there in between tutoring sessions and Spartan races, and training sessions, and everything along those lines. So I just feel like we were a three-headed monster this year in that respect. And we were blessed with, A, a very wonderful group of kids, and B, a very good group of parents who let the kids play and let us coach. And it turned out to be a great year. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Coach. So just for our community members, I'm about to proceed in a strategic coherence planning update. You are more than welcome to remain, but if you'd like to exit at this point, we'll give you a minute. Okay, just to conclude my comments, I wanted to provide the board with a brief update on the coherence planning processes I've tried to do throughout the school year. This will not be the final update. We're just moving along. So just for, for tonight's sake, you'll recall that we're using this, it is a one-page overview. I've broken it up into two slides here to describe each phase of the process within the coherence planning, which is a five-phase process with Jonathan Costa, our facilitator. And we're entering the final phase here, where we're aligning our actions with our strategic, strategic focus for the final, or for the draft plan. So you will have seen some communications come from me over the past week with respect to this, and I'll describe this in more detail in the, in the next few minutes. So first, I wanted the board to be aware, as we talked last time, about the different systems within the schools that the team was examining. We've now examined and dived into the work associated with each of those systems, and we've come up with the following strategies. And I think this gives you a pretty good overview of what direction our work in the next six months to 12 months would likely entail, or the areas that we're really going to focus on. The first should come as no surprise. We've been talking about this for some time. Really, though, what came out of the coherence planning process, again, was a reaffirmation of a discussion that we've had really over the last year and a half at the board level, the need to really look at our curriculum and to make sure that our curriculum is vertically and horizontally aligned. That is, our students are having consistent experiences across grade levels, but also an aligned experience that's truly building upon itself as they progress through our system in grades K through 12. We're also recognizing that we need to give focus to our professional learning plan to make sure that, as we're talking about, the essential skills and attributes that we'd like to see all of our students graduate with, that we have a professional learning structure in place for faculty and staff who are going to be working with our students each day. Third, we came upon the need to really examine a goal-setting process so that we truly are measuring our progress at the building, at the district, the building, and the classroom level, in how our work is connecting to our district's mission, the beliefs we have for our students, and the critical student skills and dispositions that were identified through the planning process. This is the final two. Developing, again, a strategy around all students, and this probably isn't framed the best way, and that's why it's important to note "draft," because I think there's some wordsmithing we still need to do here, but that all students, including those who I would say are traditionally or historically underserved, or who are part of vulnerable populations, I believe that's supposed to say, but I didn't want to change it without talking to the team, have the same high expectations for success and access to opportunities to learn. And lastly, communication, which, again, at our level, we've talked about, but specifically being, bringing a level of intention into our communications with our community, with our parents, about how the work we're doing is connected to our district mission, our beliefs, and the student success skills, or the critical skills and attributes. So those were five strategies that have come out of our work thus far. And the team, right now, is finalizing its action steps that are associated with each one of those. So that, those are not yet final. We still have one session left as a full coherence planning team to, to develop those in draft form. So that is described here. Again, we met last week, and we're scheduled to meet in two or three more weeks. Now concurrently, as we are developing a draft of the plan, a second thought exchange has been sent out to the community. It's posted on our website. It'll be posted in, I believe, this week's newspapers, local papers, which essentially asks us where, as a school system, are we getting it right, and where could we do better? And the coherence planning team really needs to sit with that information before we work towards finalizing any, any draft. So that thought exchange is currently live. As of today, we had about 160 participants. I was pleased to see that we had many students participate in the thought exchange. I think about half of those participants have been students thus far, which is good. And I'm encouraged to see the response rate be so high, given that it's only been open for a few days. I think we launched that Thursday of last week, and already have 160 responses. So this is just an overview that we sent out last week, asking for community members to participate in the thought exchange. Also want to note that Jonathan will be here on February 3rd at 6:00 PM. Jonathan is our facilitator for this process. He'll also be sharing certain elements of the plan with the community. So folks can participate via the thought exchange. They could also come to the community forum. They could do one of those two things, but we think both are, will be good collection tools for us to hear back from the community on various things that we're currently doing, or that we have listed in the draft plan, to hear feedback before we finalize the plan for the, for the board's review. So this is going to be in the newspaper this week, and again, it was distributed electronically last week in the community. And just a note on the thought exchange, and I think you can click on that. And that link's live, so this will bring you right in, and you can participate from here. So again, we think this is a pretty good tool. It's set up similarly to the last thought exchange. And all you have to do is click on the link. That is hyperlinked on all of our communications, and then you enter into the thought exchange this way. That is all I had for the board this evening. If there's any questions about the coherence planning process, I'm happy to answer those now.
How many people participated in the thought exchange the first time?
180.
Oh, so we're way ahead.
We're on target to have more than last time. I think the students participating really made a difference.
That's great. That's exciting to hear.
So I would, I would certainly encourage everyone who received, received the email to participate, because it's a great opportunity to do so and to make your voice heard. And I'm glad to see that's in the paper. So was it in the paper last time?
It may have made, it may have made Friday's current.
Oh, no, last, in the fall?
Oh, in the fall, yes. We did put it in.
Okay, great.
But this time, we tried to time it concurrently. I think it went in a little late last time, relative to when it launched electronically. So we wanted to do both concurrently this time.
And just, I know you've, you've answered this question before, but I've forgotten, so I'll ask again. The content that Jonathan's going to review on the 3rd will be sort of at the strategy level. Will he be dipping into, like, what are the actual things that are going to be done below those?
Yeah. So he's going to first provide an overview on the, the process as a whole, just in case, anticipating that folks want, may want to know a little bit about that.
Sure, if you're dipping into it, yeah.
Yep. And then he's going to show certain components of the draft plan, the strategy, a few of the action steps that are aligned with that, and then opening it up for feedback. And depending on the number of individuals we have who are SVP, we'll, you know, we want it to be participative, so, you know, we may modify the format a little bit, but only in the spirit of allowing for more, greater participation. So we're waiting to see how many RSVPs we get.
And the, the thought exchange, is it, does it dip down to that next level, too?
It does not.
Or is it just, okay. So that will be the first time for the community to sort of hear, what are the action items under each? Okay.
Correct. The thought exchange is focused on the critical skills and attributes that are listed there. And I think the essential question is, what are the most important things our schools currently do well or need to do better to ensure that all Howl Dane students graduate with our critical skills and attributes listed below?
And will there be another, once you, once you get to further, sort of more finalized understanding of what the action steps are under each one of these, is there going to be another opportunity for the community to see those and react?
There may. I haven't thought that far ahead yet, as far as the community engagement around that process. Certainly, at that level, we want to make sure, you know, the board feels comfortable with whatever review has been done up to that point. I was sitting with some of the work today, and just digesting it, because again, it's still relatively new, and thinking where we may want to be a bit more strategic, no pun intended, though, in reaching out to certain communities as it comes to that strategy development part, just for feedback. But again, I, I think when it's, when we work through this next phase, and the coherence planning team has a chance to sit down again, I'll have a better idea of that.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Benanti. All right. I think next up is our workshop topic for this evening, which is a special education update from Ms. Rounds.
Oh, yeah. There you go. I'm supposed to pass that off to you.
So, good evening to everyone. My name is Tara Rounds. For those of you who don't know me, I think I know most of the people in the room tonight. I am the semi-new director of Pupil Personnel Services for Howl Dane, but I'm not so new to Howl Dane. Been here for a while, but I'm six months into this position. So at this point, I'm happy to give the board an overview and an update on, specifically, not on all of PPS, but on the Special Education Department. Okay. So, I provided the board with a document that comes from New York State. This is the Blueprint for Improved Results for Students with Disabilities. This comes from New York State Ed. It's a statewide framework for improvement. There are seven core principles that we should be reflecting upon, and that we have been reviewing, for reviewing our practice and for identifying where improvements can be made. So you have the full document there, just to look back on. But I just wanted to start the presentation here, keeping that in mind. Okay. So, first of all, this is just our, this is a, this slide is our numbers, our students. Howl Dane currently services 101 students with IEPs, K through 12. We do have 10, K through 12 in district, I should say, elementary, middle school, and high school. We do have 10 students who are currently in out-of-district placements. So for some students who may need more specialized instruction, they're at several different placements out of district, including BOCES. Other districts have programs within the district, within their public schools. And there's also state-approved, New York State-approved, private day and residential programs. So that's where some of those students may be in placements for their educational needs. Currently, we have 15 students who are classified as preschool students with disabilities. This number changes very quickly. I just updated it today, because this is our three-to-five program. The services are provided by the county, but we conduct the CPSE meetings. So students as young as two and a half can be referred to us for services. So like I said, that number fluctuates, and I just had to update it today. And we have 53 students who have Section 504 Accommodation Plans. So this isn't necessarily students with special education services. These are students who may need just accommodations and modifications to, within the general ed program.
Tara, sorry.
Sorry.
Lack of knowledge. I apologize. Are the one, the 101 and the 53 mutually exclusive buckets, or is there potentially overlap?
The 101, yes. The 101 is only students with IEPs, and then another 53 are only students with 504 plans. Yep. Okay. And this is just an overview of the programs that we have. Being a small district, we reassess this every year. We look at our programs and see where the need is. As you can see, K through 12, we have integrated co-teaching classes, in different classes, but at every grade level. These are classrooms where there's a general education teacher and a special education teacher. teacher sharing the class. As we get into middle school, you see in the secondary grade levels, we have resource rooms. Resource rooms are a ratio of five to one, so five students to one teacher. And it, within the resource room, this class is designed to support the core classes and also to provide study skills and organizational skills, depending on each individual student's goals. And then in the high school, we, we do have a few 10th grade special classes with a ratio of 12 to one. That's our capacity. We don't have 12 children in there right now, being so small, but it could go up to 12 to one. These are classes that are still regents-level classes, but students may need special, more specialized instruction than what is offered in the ICT model, or they may just need to move at a different pace for their learning needs. Any questions about that?
Yeah. So is, is that the same model as a special class for the grade 3, 4 ELA reading and math? That, 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 under elementary school, that special class?
Right, yes.
That's the one thing on this, this slide that I'm not familiar with.
So the special class is grade, it's a combined 3, 4. We have one offered for ELA, one for math, and a reading special class at that grade level. Yep. Okay. These are the related services that we offer within the department. Some of these are, are the same as they were last year. We have two speech and language therapists offering speech-language therapy. We have one full-time occupational therapist offering occupational, occupational therapy. Our physical therapist is contracted. She comes one and a half days a week to give, we have a small number of students who also require physical therapy within school. And for counseling, we have two social workers and 1.6 school psychologists. But I wanted to point out that the 0.6 school psychologist serves a CSE chair and is conducting evaluations, not necessarily doing counseling unless needed, not regular coun, regular ongoing mandated counseling. I should also point out that within our guidance department, we have school counselors, two school counselors who also offer counseling. I didn't include them here because they're not providing IEP mandated counseling. They're providing counseling school-wide. So because this presentation is geared towards the Special Education Department, I didn't include them there, but I wanted to mention them because we do have more social, emotional support. And also new to us, we offer behavioral consultation and we recently hired, as you know, one full-time board-certified behavior analyst. So that's really the changes this year, is we moved our, one of our 0.5 psychologists to a 0.6 and we hired a BCBA. Okay. So just an update on the goals that I presented to you earlier in this year. There's three of them. So my first goal for this year for the department was to conduct a needs assessment, to come in as a new person, find out what our parents and our teachers and our community thinks are, things that we're doing really well within the department and also places where we might improve. So I did throughout the fall, meet with several parents who responded to a letter that I sent out to meet, and teachers and staff members, both individually, and then we met as a group. And over the next couple of slides, I'm gonna, I'm going to review some of the common themes that were identified. There are many diverse strengths and needs that were reported by many different individuals, and those are important. And we're certainly keeping those in mind and I'm sharing those, but for the purpose of this presentation, I'm just going to share the common themes that were represented by several people that I interviewed. So common strengths shared, talked about, you know, for our small size, we're really doing a, a great job of meeting individual student needs. That was something that was repeated several times. Also that our staff really know and care about our students and are responsive to parents. I heard over and over how much our staff knows the learning needs of our children so well, but also just knows them as people and knows their families and, you know, regularly communicates with families. And finally, that our staff is collaborative in meeting student needs, so they work as a good team with their related service providers, with their paraprofessionals, the aides that work with them, with administration. Those were all the common strengths that were identified. Any questions there? Okay. And then in terms of common needs that were shared and common themes that came up for needs, one area is a need for training our paraprofessionals, the need to train our aides. Another need was, you know, different people in different ways felt that we could expand our services. So whether it be, a couple of examples I lifted, listed there were, whether it be to offer a resource room at earlier grade levels, because we offer resource room at the secondary grade levels, was, was one idea. And also some individuals that I interviewed would like to see an increase in ICT, sort of integrated co-teaching, that's offered in some subjects, but not all subjects and at every grade level. So those were some, those were programmatic needs that were shared. And then finally, a need for additional support and training for managing significant behavioral difficulties within the school district.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I think it's great that you interviewed both staff and parents, and I think for the purpose of this, like pointing out like the common things, themes across needs and strengths is really important. Were, do you thi, were the common strengths and needs, were they shared across staff and parents? Or do you think?
Often they were, yes.
They were?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah. So the things that you're listing here as common, you would say, are, were shared?
Were reported by at least, you know, one or two staff members and may have also been reported by parents as well.
Thank you.
Identified, I should say.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. So my second department goal for this year was to increase communication with preschool parents. The CPSC process is different as you come into the school age process. And I just wanted to update where we are with that. Currently, our related service providers are developing tips and strategies to share with preschool parents. So they're coming up with some really great ideas. A lot of times when our students receive related services such as speech-language therapy or occupational therapy, the, those related service providers will give homework or will give ideas for parents to utilize at home. This is for parents who, you know, may not be necessarily receiving those exact services, but ideas so that they're ready when they come into kindergarten. So maybe more preventative. And those will be eventually posted on the website. And I'll also, for some of the meetings that I have for preschool parents, will have some hard, hard copies at some of those meetings to share. An informational parent meeting prior to the transition to CSE took place last year for the first time when Mary Ellen Herzog was our interim. So I am going to continue with that. I attended that and it went very well. So we're going to do that this spring. We visit preschools and we just started visiting preschools again to assess transition needs and communicate with the parents. Dawn Rosano and I just went to our first preschool to do a visit, and that's always nice to get out and see what's going on in our preschool center-based programs. And finally, attending the evening transition meeting for kindergarten. So at the end of this month, there will be a meeting for parents of incoming kindergarteners to go over curriculum in kindergarten, kind of discuss what to expect. Typically, the kindergarten teachers and the principal attends. This year, I will attend and Dawn Rosano, our new CPSC chairperson, will be there as And then the third department goal that was identified was to begin to work with teachers to examine achievement gaps. So we've been diving into the data as best as we can, looking at the New York State assessment. That was shared with teachers, but we've also looked at the NWEA assessment to look at patterns that are identified there. And then in addition to that, teachers have begun reviewing and reporting on observational data that they see in class, that they see with their students when taking classroom-based tests, so that we can kind of review all of this data and see if we see any patterns emerging. So this is an effort to just learn more about our students and see if we find any patterns. And the principals were doing this at our conference day, our last superintendent's conference day, where data was reviewed at all levels. So it's common across the district, not just in the Special Education Department or the PPS Department. So the next slide, I'd like to review some of the professional development that we have started this year. The first one is not new, but inclusion coaches from Goldman, Soren, Rutherford continue to work with our co-teach peers. I've reported on them in past board reports. We have a coach at the elementary level and a coach at the secondary level who comes and they're working to plan with teachers to prevent barriers to learning within the co-teach class, to provide ideas for differentiation within the co-teach class. And really, they're observing classes and then sitting down and brainstorming and planning and coming up with unique ideas and ways to use the various co-teach models within the classroom. Additionally, our counseling staff continues with dialectical behavior therapy. In terms of professional development, we continue to have a consultant come in monthly to meet with them, actually twice a month, and they will be going to an intermediate DBT training soon, I think next month, and then there'll be a wrap-up at the end of this year. So that PD continues. Earlier in the year, for Superintendent's Conference Day, Mike Lambert, our school attorney, met with our staff to provide an overview of IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Achieve Education, Education Act, the requirements, the challenges, and common mistakes to avoid in terms of writing IEPs, implementing IEPs, writing reports and doing assessments, things like that. And they answered a lot of questions, so the staff really appreciated that. Another way that we provide professional development throughout the district is through after-school staff development, or ASSDs. So I just listed here a bunch that have recently been offered and are coming up very shortly. This is not an exhaustive list. There'll be many more. But within the PPS department, some areas of training that are being provided through the expertise of our own teachers. So, for example, IEP goal writing. Several of our special education teachers went to multiple-day workshops on how to write really solid, measurable IEP goals, and then they're coming back and turnkeying that information with our staff. And so some of these are, are areas that our, our staff has received additional training and is sharing with their colleagues. In terms of future professional development, this is very near future. Safety care, behavior de-escalation, and safety training will be provided. Actually, Mrs. Jammon, Christine Jammon, the elementary principal, was already certified in safety care. And when we were reviewing some de-escalation programs and what would provide the best training for our staff, we reviewed this and this was really, we found the best opportunity to be able to send people out and then have internal trainers. So Christine Jammon was already trained. She just attended her refresher course last week, so it says to attend, but she already attended. And then Ms. Grohe, our BCBA, will also be attending a three-day workshop, a train-the-trainer workshop, and will be able to internally train staff in de-escalation techniques. So this is really just to keep students safe when they become highly dysregulated or are engaging in behaviors that could be aggressive, that could hurt someone. These are all, they'll be trained in techniques to de-escalate those situations and keep students safe. The next one is planning for aid training. That's underway. We're working on that for the next Superintendent's Conference Day. And finally, our BCBA will be able to work with staff on implementing behavior intervention plans, as well as data collection on behavior and general behavior strategies within the classroom for students that may not have a specific plan. I imagine that a lot of this training is going to be organic in nature with her. She's already been pushing into classes and observing, and when a behavior intervention plan is written, she provides the training that goes right along with it to our aides and our teachers. But also she'll be able to provide some of that staff development in a workshop model down the line as well. So just going back to remind us to review the blueprint for improved results for students with disabilities. Like I said, I would like to keep that, be cognizant of this and continue to reflect on this moving forward as I continue in this role. Do you have any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can you say a little bit about the safety care training? Just how that's implemented and if information about that is shared with the parents, so they have, they're in one way or another?
So, safety care training will be provided, initially, it's being provided to teach them as trainers, right? So some of that might involve de-escalating a situation when a child may have, you know, a meltdown or a tantrum on the floor and students have to be moved away so that they're not hurt. It may involve a student who may be running out of the building or running out of the classroom, a way to guide them back to the classroom to keep the child safe so that we're not hurting anybody, so that child's not hurting themselves or others. So as we become trained in those methods, that, yes, we can share that information with parents and have more information for the board as well.
Thanks very much for that elaboration. This is actually really more of a comment, but as you were talking about that, it wasn't a, a practice that I was, like, as, I mean, it makes sense that it's something you could be, there are methods to do and you could be trained to do it, but it wasn't until you were speaking that it occurred to me that what that might look like and what the need might be could be really different at the elementary grades and the upper grades. And so it's really, you know, it's a, a pretty big undertaking, I would assume.
Right.
And I know Ms. Jammon is at the elementary level, and I don't know enough about the, the, Ms.
Grohe.
Grohe, thanks very much. But are there, are there plans to make sure that that's also implemented, that training is also available in the, in the middle and upper levels as, as well?
Sure. So they'll be available to train anyone internally. So once they get certified?
I guess because I saw Ms. Jammon, I just automatically thought elementary school, but I don't guess that's necessarily, in terms of a train-the-trainer model, she's not limited to just training at the elementary level?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
I'll jump in on, while we're on the training bandwagon, a question. How do you think about a training program for individual teachers or the, the cohort of teachers across the entire district? Do you look to see an individ, and this may be a larger question about how training is distributed or administered or, or requested? But do you look to provide specific baseline instead of training for everybody? And, and you haven't finished, you haven't done this, you need to do it? And/or do you look at individuals in different roles and say, okay, this person was certainly bad? And how, how is ongoing assessment? There's lots of things being offered. How do we know whether the staff is in the right way, cohesively and comprehensively trained?
So in a broader, on a, in a broader way, I'm collaborating with the principals, right? So we're talking at our administrative meetings to talk about what is the need for all teachers? Is there a need for differentiated instruction, right, across the board for all teachers? Or is there another need that would take precedence over that? Those are discussions that we're having along with Dr. Benante. And then there's always a need for specific training for specific individuals and what they teach. So that's where, you know, Goldman, Soren, Rutherford come in and DBT comes in because of, based on what those professionals are, are doing in their role, we have to provide training for them as well.
Okay.
And just, if I may, just as an example, today we were talking about differentiated instruction. So our staff's readiness to enter into a classroom environment and meet the needs, the diverse needs of a set of students, 20 students, if you will, but yet in ways that, again, meet them where they are, but still address the same learning standards, right? So that's a, that's a training that we feel may, we may need to initiate with all of our staff.
Right.
Whereas what Tara's talking about with the particular training, I'm sorry, the name, there's different program, which one are we?
Goldman, Soren, Rutherford.
No, the.
Safety care.
Safety care, thank you. I was gonna say handle with care.
Yes.
With the safety care training, we're prioritizing certain practitioners right now who have contact, regular contact with students who may exhibit certain behaviors that need that level of support. So we're continually examining what does the whole group need? And then what may, what advanced training, if you will, or where would we like to start with certain training, with a certain segment of our. with a certain segment of our teaching staff, and then either scale it up from there or just decide that's the staff that needs it, and we're comfortable with where, with it, beginning and ending there.
So, just, at the end of the year, would you have an objective for, I want the entire staff trained on these three things, and we have 20 people who I want to train on this, and I have 20 people I want to train on this, and that's our goal?
By the end of this year?
I'm just throwing that out as a time.
I think in terms of staff-wide, we're thinking about next year.
Okay, that's fair.
That's just where we are right now. In terms of the smaller pockets of my department, we're starting some of that this year.
Okay, all right, great. What was the other? So, the other question I had was the, really interesting that you did interviews to capture sort of insight as to where people think we're doing well and have some opportunities. Did you find those interviews mapped to what you're seeing in the data? Was there alignment on where we're doing well, where, both from what people are telling you and from the analysis of the NWA and some of the other stuff at the end? Do they align, or are you hearing different things?
They're measuring different things to me.
Okay.
So when I look at the NWA and the New York State Assessment, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at mathematics, we're looking at reading, we're looking at, you know, fluency, decoding, comprehension, those things. Whereas I think that the scope of the interviews were more programmatic in terms of where do people see need or gaps within our program, where we're not meeting needs.
Okay, I guess, sorry, totally makes sense. Is there another way to get at where our program is strong, or are there an opportunity other than interviews?
So, we have had, and I've reviewed it, but we'll need to continuously review. We did have an audit done several years ago. I think when Dr. Shoah was in this position, there was an outside audit of the Special Education Department done. So, whether or not that aligns, for the most part, we were in pretty good shape numbers-wise in terms of meeting the needs with the providers that we have and things like that.
Staff.
But I would, you know, I think that would be the closest way to be able to, to judge that.
Okay.
I would need to think on that a little bit more, and maybe I'll think of another, you know.
We were talking about the strategic coherence plan, and you, you get the input from 180 people, and they have very specific things that they're interested in, but you may be leaving out, I don't know, different ways to think about it.
Right.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move into communication from the public. I will read our public communication statement. The Haldane Board of Education, desires and values, input from the entire school community. For those who wish to address the board, please sign in and state your name for the record. Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Disparaging remarks and discussion of district personnel are prohibited. Although we do not engage in dialogue, we are listening. Please leave your contact information with our district clerk, Ms. Julia Farmalaro, for prompt follow-up from the board president or superintendent. Can I push that on Jen Daly?
You can now. You can sign anything to Jen this evening.
Fantastic, so.
We do have.
Absolutely.
Yes, Cory Reister.
Fantastic, thank you.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to speak very briefly to something that Ms. Rounds brought up, which is the integrated co-teach model at Haldane. I have a son who benefits greatly from that, and he is now in eighth grade. And I can honestly say that I really hope the board looks more deeply at this model and how it's functioning, and how we really need to expand it to increase in the subjects outside of simply math and ELA. And one of the setbacks to doing that, as I have been told repeatedly in multiple meetings with individuals over many years, is that we do not have a special education staff to accommodate doing that. So we need more teachers to be able to expand that model. And I would add also that the board and the district in general look more closely at how curriculum has changed over the years. So for instance, in social studies, the level of cognitive demands placed on students in terms of their ability to inference and summarize and, and look at actual authentic historical documents, the writing and the reading that is involved in social studies now is fantastic and incredibly difficult for students who struggle with language. So if you have a student who is successful or getting their needs met in an English, ELA, ICT class, but they are not receiving that support in a social studies class, you will see a gap right there. And I do believe, when I look at my own son's numbers, that you very clearly see a gap in numbers across the board. And I know that within the special education system, need is supposed to inform services. But when you do not have the staff to supply those services, those needs are not met. So in the course of budget this year and in the course of the strategic coherence planning process, I would really urge the board to look closely at where they are in terms of the number of special education teachers that we have at Haldane. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cory.
Hi, my name is Teresa Lagerman. Whoops, this thing is alive. I wanted to, I guess, follow up on what Cory said. I also believe that expanding the ICT services would be really helpful. I have two kids, my third grader is in special ed, my sixth grader is regular ed. I also wanted to point out, I know Ms. Rounds mentioned that supporting the paraprofessionals would be one of the goals. I think that's something that shouldn't be overlooked. And also, my son right now, I think he's still, he's supposed to have a one-on-one all day. And because of scheduling and, you know, shortage of paraprofessionals and everything, that's split with three different people, somebody in the morning, two different people in the afternoon. And, you know, for these type of kids who need that one-on-one support, breaking up their routine like that is, you know, it can be a challenge. For my son, it's fine, but, you know, it's something that I think could also be reinforced. You know, giving them more training and also, you know, just having a more consistent schedule, seeing if, you know, we have enough paraprofessionals and just trying to keep an eye on those schedules so that the kids are not, you know, shifting around from one person to another.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Fantastic, okay, let's move on. The committee minutes are there for your review. We have a report from the, please, go ahead if you, if you want, absolutely. We have the report from the Wellness Committee from December and the Technology Committee from January 6th. And now let's move into information reports. And I think our student advisor is not here. I'm assuming at play practice.
He did email right before the meeting today, he did not.
All right, all right, fantastic. Then we will jump over Andrew and jump to Ms. Jammon, principal of elementary school.
Good evening, so you have my report. There's just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight that our teachers have been doing recently to both expand the offerings that we have and to work with our community. Our third-grade teachers have started writing their letters to the community, and they are going to begin their cursive writing unit. And to make that authentic and useful and actually meaningful, they are writing to seniors in the community, and then we'll be writing letters back and forth in cursive with community members. I arm-twisted my own parents into writing, so we would have enough. And so two of our classes will be writing back and forth, and then they'll have a luncheon towards the end of the year where they actually get to meet their pen pals and talk about what the relationship has developed over the course of the year. And our teachers have been doing professional development for each other through our ASSD program. Ms. Graham recently delivered a professional development on math manipulatives and how to use them to support numeracy within the math classroom. Mr. Duder left, but he and Ms. Hartford delivered an ASSD using fourth-grade students who are adept at teaching robotics with our interactive robots and coding them to our other teachers that they could participate in our STEAM competition, which will be coming up in March. So, just wanted to highlight those events.
Fantastic, thank you. And Dr. Selke?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to bring attention to the fact that January is Mental Health Awareness Month. And at Haldane Middle School, we take the mental health of our students, our families, and our community very seriously. And with that in mind, we have a couple of events coming up. For our faculty, in early February, we have a Mental Health 101 After-School Staff Development that's going to be provided by the Mental Health Association of New York State. So a big thank you to Lisa Khan, our school counselor, for arranging for that. And we had that offering last year as well, and it was very well-attended. And it's offered K-12, to K-12 faculty, so we're having a repeat of that. And then a little bit later on in the month, the second piece of it is educator resiliency, because there's, the better our faculty are able to take care of themselves, the better they're going to be able to take care of our kids. So, for our students, myself and Mr. Solomon are working with Ed Crowe to look at the standards, the new mental health education standards that came out in July of 2018. So when they came out, we did some work with Mr. Crowe to embed them into the current health curriculum, and he's been implementing them, and we're reviewing them together now. So we can make sure that we're delivering our students the best in terms of lessons for mental health education through their health classes. And for our community, we have the February 13th Community Read on our book, Patina, which is the second book in the track series by Jason Reynolds. And there are a lot of mental health themes within that book as well. So we encourage everyone to come out, plus just the social interaction is healthy. So come out on the evening of February 13th at 6:30 PM to partake in that. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Mrs. Stephan?
Just to piggyback on what Mary Ann started with, talking about mental health, two, two things I think that tie into that. We just completed the connectedness survey at the high school level, where high school teachers filled out connectedness with each of the individual students within the high school. We had 30 faculty members fill out the survey, and it was kind of un rated. I feel very connected, somewhat connected or not connected, to help our clinicians figure out maybe some students that we didn't feel that adults felt they had a connection with, and to try to work through some of that with our clinical staffs and our Wednesday morning clinical meetings. So that's something to, to talk about there. And we are also, the last couple of years, we haven't been pushing our high school mentors into the eighth-grade classrooms. And this year, for the second half of the year, we're going to do some of that work again in regards to transition planning for high school. So we've started some of that work. And lastly, it's that time of year where we really start to talk about scheduling for next year. So some of you with seniors in the room, I know, you know, that process isn't happening necessarily here, but we, this year, under the new regulations, the new guidance plan, which the board approved last July, right? Each student in grades eight and 11 will have individual meetings along with parents in regards to that process. The 11th grade will focus on post-high school plans in addition to senior year scheduling. We will also be meeting with the ninth, with the ninth, 10th grade students in regards to one-on-one with the counselor meetings about the schedule, not necessarily with parents. Parents will then receive a letter in regards to course requests that they can then sign off on. And if they have questions, they can reach out to the guidance counselor. In my letter that went to families, I spent some time at the beginning of the letter really talking about the scheduling process. You know, and while we're trying to offer rigorous curriculum to the students, we want to ensure that they are also finding balance in their lives in regards to that scheduling process, which I know can be difficult. I know they want to stretch themselves, they want to push themselves. But striking that balance in those conversations with guidance counselors and parents are incredibly important. I also just want to point out the elective offerings. And I know sometimes we kind of push aside the electives to focus on AP or honors or this and that. And I think that the departments are spending a lot of time looking at electives this year. We've been looking at them for the last month and a half. I'm hoping to provide some feedback to the board next month in my board report on some ideas we have for the next school year. So stay tuned.
Great, thank you. Ms. Rounds, I know you just did a long overview, but.
I will be very brief. A couple of my items in my board report, I kind of touched upon just naturally in my presentation. I guess one thing to add that I would like to highlight is one of our special education teachers, Jen Gernand, just provided a training, and I was able to assist her with that on the CSE process and the CST, our Child Study Team process, including response to intervention. And she's got such a broad knowledge base in interventions and resources. And the, the training was meant for the new, our new employees who are a part of the mentor program. But many teachers who have been teaching here for a very long time attended, which was nice to see because they got a refresher, they got some new ideas, they were able to learn some, some new resources. So, thank you to Jen Gernand. We're beginning our annual review process, so that involves holding meetings for all of our students and writing their IEPs and assessing their needs for next year. And I'm relying a lot upon our special education coordinators to help coordinate that process and identify needs and look at where our students are now and plan for what we may need for next year. So, a big thank you to Andrea McQ and Kelly Kilpert, who are helping as our special education coordinators.
Great, thank you. Mr. Solomon?
So, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick announcements. First, I know it's hard to believe, but spring sports will be starting in only about six weeks. So between now and our next board meeting that I'll be up here, the registration window will be open for family ID. Just make sure that your child has an up-to-date physical, please sign up. And then second, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our Student Athletic Council. We had a great meeting last week. They're in a process of starting to promote senior nights for both our girls' and boys' basketball programs. We read a great article on mental mistakes that athletes make, and it's been a really great, I don't know what the word is. We're reinvigorating the group. It kind of, you know, fell away a few years ago, and now we're coming back. And we're gonna have another meeting in a few weeks, but thank you to all the students that have been there. Students who have not been there, if you're interested, please see me, but thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Mr. Walsh?
Hi, good evening. Facilities Department has done a lot of work this past month, this past month, taking advantage of some time where students haven't been in the buildings. In addition to some of the work that's been described in the report, yesterday we were able to take down a heating system of the elementary school, middle school. We just worked to some heating actuator valves, replace some seals and some pumps to keep that system up and running the way that it should. We're going to continue that work with TBS Controls, our heating controls vendor, to make sure that we're kind of dialed in where we should be. We've also worked a lot with our regulatory compliance. We had five DOT inspections this, this past month on our, on our buses. Tom McKeel is the district mechanic, does a fantastic job of keeping those buses up and maintained and where they should be. Yesterday, we also had the six-month, the HERIT inspection. That's the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act. So we looked at all spaces that contained asbestos-containing materials and all was satisfactory within the buildings. So that's a, a great thing. And then finally, capital projects that are coming up for this first phase, that has been placed out to bid. So we're waiting, proposals due back February 11th. So we're looking forward to have those back on tap for this summer 2020. That's all, thank you.
Great, just, just a quick question for those who may be dipping into this meeting, because some people do. I know you brought up asbestos and managing that. Could you just, at a high level, provide clarity on where those are, what the status is?
Sure. Every three years, we have a detailed inspection by a consultant to come through and look at all the spaces that have asbestos-containing materials and detail the condition of it. We have booklets that describe every space and what materials are located within that space, and they're open to be viewed at any time. Every six months thereafter, the consultant comes back and looks at that, the condition of the asbestos-containing material to determine that they haven't degraded in any way, shape, or form, and if so, provides some type of remediation plan to, to take care of it. So those are available for, for viewing at any time. They just make an appointment and go through those booklets.
Great, thank you very much. I think that's it for the information reports. I think that's it for the information reports. Lovely. All right, move into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
So we have the minutes for the January 7th business meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I had to say please. So we, so we have a couple, a couple contractual approvals. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
And finally, new business. We have two items of new business. First, the approval of the CSC, CPSC placements.
Okay, the recommended action is be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion?
So, second.
All in favor? Any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, second. There was another one added, wasn't there?
I added number two here and I can speak to that if, when the time.
Sure.
Up for discussion, which is the approval of the contract with Dominican College.
Yep.
Okay, recommended action states be it resolved that upon, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute the contract with Dominican College for the 2019-2020 academic year to add the course MS 120 Business Math to the high school course catalog. A copy, copy of the contract shall be incorporated by reference in the minutes of this meeting.
May I have a motion? Please.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
If you don't want. So we work with and have worked in the past with a variety of higher ed institutions to expand the course offerings that we have available to our high school students. Julia has evaluated what we currently have in place and engaged with Dominican, in discussion with Dominican College to open up this business math course to students for the second half of the school year, should they wish to enroll. It's taken some time for us to get the contract organized, also to review it with our council. We received it back this weekend. It's, we'd like to have it approved this evening if possible, so we can begin enrolling students in the course. And Julia, if there's anything else that I've left out that you think is essential, please feel free to add in.
Just very quickly, this course used to be offered through DCC. DCC no longer offers business math. They changed their course catalog, so they dropped us and dropped other area schools from business math. So we were seeking another institution that would provide the opportunity, hence DCC.
As I looked into, thank you, Julia, as I looked into this a little bit, it doesn't appear that we have in the past, or we may not have, put these contracts before the board. We should. So, you know, moving forward, we will, and this is one that's obviously pertinent because we're, it's current. And about moving forward, I think you'll, you'll see a few more of these.
How many other classes do we have that are like this? Partnerships of, roughly, roughly?
Roughly, probably 12.
Okay, all right.
So is, Julia, so, so that I understand, is this the same as like when, like I remember when Pete was in the 10th grade and he took honors English, you could co, it's like a dual enrollment class, that's what these are. Oh, okay.
You don't have any 10th grade, typical 10th grade courses?
Or I might, I mean, I may be, I may be misremembering, but it's, so it's dual enrollment, that's what it is. So the class, Haldane already offers, this is the mechanism through which students, when they enroll in the class, can co-enroll in a college class and, and get dual enrollment.
If they choose to.
If they choose to, right. If they choose to.
And then it's on them.
Right.
To then see if those courses will then transfer to university.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, fantastic. One reminder, piece of new business, board self-evaluation process, as you remember, we have two goals, board-specific goals for this year. One is self-evaluation, which is new, which should be fantastic. And second one being working on our policy manual, which I think is still scheduled for delivery back to us from Erie Bosse's.
We, Julia, just checked in and they're, they estimate two to three weeks from now, which is good.
Getting closer.
We hope that's accurate.
All right. But for, as a reminder to the board, there'll be two self-evaluation timelines. One is a mid-year, which is informal, we'll be using the HEDI framework, and then the year-end. I'd remind you of the timing of the mid-year to provide me comments back, hopefully January 24th, and I'll compile the high-level feedback and share it at the next board meeting.
So my reading of this, of what you wanted from us was not for us to go through, not to do the HEDE rating for each of the, but really more to look at the big headers and sort of say, oh, I think this is, seems good, or when I look at this, this is one of the places where I'm wondering if there's some weaknesses, that really high level.
Correct. Within, within the, I'm going to forget the...
There's five.
There are five and then there's 25 specific things you can score.
Right, but you're just, you're talking the five.
I'm talking, at the five, at the five specific practice levels, I think is what it's called.
Yeah, right.
Please take a look and provide sort of insight into things that jump out at you, right? Either opportunities, especially opportunities, and strengths, and in both cases, what either, what enables that? Why is it a strength of the board? Or why is it an opportunity? What could we do about it? I think for mid-year informal, that's appropriate.
And Friday, you wanted that feedback on Friday.
If you could, that'd be great. Fantastic. All right, any communicate, any more communication from the public? All right. Board reflections, time that we have added to...
I have a, I guess I have a reflection. I was pleased to see when we were talking about the thought exchange and we're thinking about moving forward, the recognition of both underserved and I think you said our vulnerable populations. This, this afternoon, there have been two occasions in the past two weeks when my son, who's in elementary school, required some extra assistance and it was, my wife was the only person really who could come in and sort of help the staff get him through some difficult moments. And, you know, as far as, you know, to here, parents and other family members are engaged as meaningful partners, we felt very much engaged. But, you know, today I couldn't help but thinking that we are in the unique position right now of, of my wife being available to do that and there are many people in our community who might be in similar situations, who would like to be engaged but who aren't. So I really look forward to seeing how we also continue the conversation to support those students and those, those families in our community as well, so I'm encouraged to see that.
Yeah, I think that's an important point. And the definition of engagement can be very different in terms of coming into the school and actually working.
Yeah.
Or, yep. Anything else? Dr. Benate, any final thoughts?
Just one, we're nearing the end of our time with Deputy Shelters, who's taken a new assignment and you may recall, I sent a letter out to the community just a couple of weeks ago as Matt's accepted a new assignment, which is very good for him and his family. And at the risk that this may be Matt's last board meeting, no, he'll be here in the fourth? Okay, but hey, I got started, so I'm going to say nice things about you anyway. I just want to acknowledge that, you know, over the last year and a half that I've had with Matt, I've observed his intention in developing very positive relationships with our students and the broader community. Matt is a very effective liaison between our school and the Putnam County Sheriff's Office when, when we need someone to be. He's dependable and very trustworthy and most importantly, it's very clear on a day-to-day basis that Matt cares about kids and that's what you want from your SRO, that's what you want from every individual who's interact, who's coming to work and serve here each day, so. And in his spare time, he serves as our boys' modified basketball coach, which I thought with certainty, I'm like, once we got him to coach, I thought, he's going to be here forever. So, Matt, I just wanted to extend my appreciation to you on behalf of our school community and maybe I'll say nice things again at the next meeting about you, but are you going to have, is Manu going to be here at the next meeting with you perhaps?
He's going to try.
Right, so, so we'll begin the transition to our, our new SRO very shortly, so.
Well, congratulations, congratulations on your position. Lovely, and you certainly have been an asset to the community, we really appreciate it. I know my kids appreciate you, so I'll speak for them. Okay, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law.
Oh, motion, sorry.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
This is what we need you for.
Yeah, no, that's, that's my role.